Good evening and welcome to the Wakefield zoning board of appeals meeting for June 24th, 2020. We will start by taking attendance by roll call. And I'll just go around the Zoom room. Chip Tarbell.
Here.
Jim McBane.
Here.
Amy Wall.
Here.
Joe Pride.
Here.
Tom Lucy.
Here.
Greg McIntosh.
Here.
And Mike Billy, we know is absent and excused. All other members present, I will now ask our board clerk Amy to read the legal notice, please.
Consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and banning gatherings of more than 10 people, this meeting will be conducted by remote participation to the greatest extent possible. The public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to the meeting in real time. Persons who wish to do so are invited to click on the following link. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial in number, 1-9-2-9-2-0-5-6-0-9-9, meeting ID 8-8-3-8-8-1-3-1-4-6-7. Please only use dial in or computer and not both as audio feedback will distort the meeting. One, continued hearings. Two, 20-33, Richard W. and Ellen J. Contardo Crozier. Application for determination and or finding with respect to continuation in existed. Extension of a nonconforming uses under Article 9, Section 190-50 to raise and replace a single story structure at rear of existing two-story to correct lack of foundation. The property is shown as map 37, lot parcels 059-050 of the assessors map and is located at 502 Lowell Street, Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
So again, for anyone who's new to board meetings and especially with our new Zoom format, just want to welcome everyone, remind everyone that the meeting is being recorded, including video, and this will be sent to WCAT and will be available for replay at a future time and date. We'd ask everyone who's participating in the meeting to try to share their audio and video in the meeting room as we would normally during a public hearing unless there are technical limitations on your end. We will, I have a copy of the files for tonight's hearing. And I believe the applicants, part of the applicant's team will have a copy to share for us on screen. They will present their information, will will ask questions and comments from the board. If there is any other members of the public, we will entertain them after that discussion. We would ask the people try to raise their hand. There's a capability to do that in Zoom and I will try to call on people in the order that I see them. We'll give everyone an opportunity to do so. If assuming any votes are taken, we will do so as we did the attendance by roll call. And I will try to keep order and mute as needed to keep things moving forward and any background noise. So with that, why don't we get started? Calling up on the agenda. Did we have, I'm sorry, you said continued hearings, but did we not, did we have anything continued, Gail?
No, we did not. I, at the time I make up legal notice, I never know if there's going to be any. So it's kind of just a administrative thing I do, yeah, just to cover up.
Makes sense. I just wanted to confirm before we launched into the new hearing. So that new hearing is 20-33, Richard W. and Ellen J. Contardo Crozier at 502 Lowell Street. So welcome, Mr. Crozier and Peter. So at this time, what we normally do, again, I don't know if you've appeared before our board before, we would ask you to just take us through what you're proposing to do. Perhaps Peter can show plans as you go along as you see fit. And then the board may have questions or comments for you. And again, if there's any other public testimony, we would take that after that. So without further ado, please go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. This is my first time on Zoom with the board, so bear with me. I'll try to do the best I can. The primary objective in coming before the board is was detailed in the the notice was to correct the lack of a foundation, the proper foundation under the single story addition that is on the back of my two-story home here at 502 Lowell Street. I bought the house in 1975 and the structure was was here at that time. The previous owners, I believe, bought the house in 1944. So sometime between 1944 and 1975, this addition was put on the house. There is no full proper foundation. It's all crawl space under this back part of the home. There's only one access. That's like a tunnel dug along one side for services. The middle of the house, the supports for the joists and beams are just maybe one or two foot long four by fours or six by sixes sitting directly on the ground. And the whole building in the middle is sinking in. The sides, sidewalls that would normally be a proper foundation are only maybe six inches wide in our rubble stone, maybe two or three feet. They don't go down to a proper, you know, footing and foundation. So the whole thing needs to be updated and that's the purpose for going before the board. We don't want to change anything. We don't want to change the width, the length, the height of the building. Because we're limited by a fence on the one side of the propping line, a patio on the other side and the windows on the second floor. So the basic structure will conform to the beginning, the same as is here now. So we don't want any additional. We just want a proper foundation under the same size building. And I don't know if, if Peter, do you have a?
I can share the site plan.
That'd be great. Thank you, Peter.
Yeah. So let's see. Host disabled participant, can you enable me?
Let's see, I don't want to make you post, let's see.
I think Dave, you have to give me permission.
I'm looking for an option to what, allow you to share?
Allow me to share, yes.
It says all participants can share. Did you try?
Yeah, I'm good now.
Okay.
Okay. See where you're at here. It's here. I'll start with the the site plan first. Let me know if you can all see it. I think you can. Can you all see it?
It hasn't come up yet.
Not yet at this point.
Interesting. You can see me, but not the site plan, huh?
Correct. When you said share screen, did you select something to share? Either your entire scope, there we go.
There we go.
All right. So I was gonna, I was gonna zoom in a little bit on that if I could make it a little clearer.
Sure.
This done by Hayes Engineering, John O'Grady. You can see he annotates the addition as it exists now. It's a one-story addition, actually. If the concept is to remove it and replace it in exactly the same location. It's 20.4 feet by 22.5 feet. And what we did is we went into the architectural and drew that addition first as it now exists. And as we propose it, see if I can share that. So now going through a set of drawings, we show you the existing house, the area of the foundation to be removed and replaced. These are existing conditions. Here's the existing kitchen. It's a porch, a kitchen, a lab. This is the patio that Mr. Crozier mentioned. Here is the house existing in the front. There's a small addition in the back. We see it from two sides in the rear. These are the windows he mentioned up in the second floor that we're trying to avoid. And now we're into proposed conditions, proposed foundation, a true frost wall with footing to tie into the existing rubble foundation. Probably a crawl space at this point, but you'll have access in there. We did a little bit of reconfiguration inside, relocating the kitchen, the lab and eating area and a larger porch in the back to exactly the same patio. And from the back, just breaking down the massing a little bit. So the kitchen is one piece, making the porch look like it's a hip roof addition in the back, French doors, windows to the yard. And that's our project, just trying to, because the old addition, which is fit, the old additions, but not even that anymore. It's existing, but it is, it is failing. And the best way to repair it is to take it out and put it back again properly.
Thank you, Peter.
No problem.
While you have it on screen, in case there's any questions, I'll just put it out to the board members. Do you have any questions for Peter or the applicant about the plans you're seeing or the project?
Just so I'm clear, Peter, you're ripping this down 100% putting a new foundation in and rebuilding. You're not
That's correct.
And putting the foundation under the existing.
No, we're taking it down completely. We're taking out the rubble foundation or almost foundation and then going back in with a new foundation and new structure.
I mean, given what I'm hearing, it's probably cost effective to do it that way as compared to trying to save what's above it.
Yes, the complications of getting under there. It's very tight to the ground and what's above it isn't in great shape anyway.
So, okay.
Yeah.
Are you doing a pour concrete?
Yes.
Seems pretty straightforward to me.
I have a question. Richard, did you talk to your neighbor to the right to let them know that you might be in their yard from time to time since you're so close?
I have in the past when I've had to do work there, they're willing to work with us. The uniqueness about that particular neighbor is that it's a Bridgewater
Yep.
facility.
I actually live across the street from you. And I actually, I actually had to do the same thing to my, my lot looks exactly at your lot. So I had to take my garage down. I had to do the same thing. I came in front of a year ago. And I had to go in my neighbor's lot, yard a lot.
So we have, like when we did our driveway
Yeah.
over, we contacted them and they let us park
Okay.
in on their property. I don't know if the same people are there or not, but we have contacted them in the past. Well, we haven't worked on and they were cooperative, so expect that's changed, but.
Is there, is there a permit for this original construction? Which you say was happened somewhere between the 40s and 79, I guess?
Yeah, between the 40s and 1975.
So is there any sort of permit on record?
Not that, not, I didn't look for one, but I don't, I don't expect that there was.
Gail, do you know? Gail? Where did Gail go? Did we lose her? I guess my question, my question is not so much about, you know, replacing one with another is are we looking for the variances based on the fact there's no permit ever issued? Therefore, it was illegally built to begin with.
We would have had no reason to look for a permit when somebody applies for, you know.
But I guess my concern is, do we need to legalize this in some way if there was never every per, any permit ever pulled?
Then might have not, maybe back then there wasn't even, maybe it wasn't even required or.
I can't imagine that.
Well, the setbacks might have been different than what they are today.
Not as tight as this one is. I mean, it might have been.
This is a continuing, this is a continuation.
Yeah, once you knock it down, it wouldn't be there anyways at that point, once it's knocked down. So it'd be like starting over anyways, right?
Well, that's, that's what they're asking for it not to be because they want it to be a continuation of the nonconforming.
This is, this is.
Put it right back on the line again.
This is the older house in the neighborhood, which probably owned more land at one time than what it currently occupies. And so whoever sold off the other lots, which are, you know, basically houses from the 60s in that area and it developed. So whoever drew the line at that time, you know, it's, it probably was entirely legal at one time, but the property line got drawn tight to this building. And it's only like 1.8 feet from the, from the property line on that, on that abutting side. I just want to make sure when we, when we approve this, because I think that's where we'd end up, is that in fact, we make sure we cross all the Ts here.
Well.
Personally, I don't see any problem with this, except that we don't want to create a trap for him.
But if we're just gonna vote to continue a nonconforming, an existing nonconforming, you know, isn't that kind of already taken care of that?
I'm not an attorney.
Thank goodness.
I'm just your resident.
Sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I know what, I know what Jim's getting at. It's, it's, I mean, is it existing nonconforming, is it existing before zoning? Because if it went up after zoning, then it's not.
Prop plans weren't even required back then.
But that's, that's the question is back, when is back then?
Right.
Addition, this isn't the house. Gail, Jack has, Jack has seen this application, right?
Yes.
Because if he, if
Right.
I mean, he's sort of the, the first line of defense here when he sees these, if he thinks they need a variance, he would probably tell them, right?
Exactly. They met Jack several times.
So finding perhaps wouldn't be enough, you probably have to get a variance to clear things up and then, well, if that were the case, we would just be entertaining, you know, an application for a variance to, to do what they want to do and be that close to the lot line. I mean, there's also frontage issue. It's not 100 feet, it's 50, but that's again, pre-existing nonconforming. So that's the way I look at it.
Well, Dave, question for you though, when you're talking about that, you know that McGrill comes in quite often, basically because of conditions like this. And the bank is saying, well, you got to get approval from the zoning board. And if, if we were to clean this thing up a bit, do we want to go steps further? So whenever this property is sold, you know, it doesn't become, come back to us basically to, in fact, or some legal ease, basically close the gap. I don't know.
I mean, I would say. I think you're making the assumption that there's a gap to be closed.
And obviously that decision isn't up to us whether we want it to come back or not. That's up to the property owner. You know what I mean? Like it's, if he's just trying to clean this, get this done, if he needs to clean it up later, it's not up to us to say, well, we'd rather do it now.
No, you're right. I mean, it's, it's a structural issue, basically is what it comes down to within the, within the parameters of what's there. And I have absolutely no issue with it, quite frankly. I just, I just want to make sure that, that either the owner understands that there may be other issues either in the future or that we don't, we provide the right clearance at this point, basically, one or the other. Both.
Yeah, I think, I think Jack would have pointed him in whatever direction he felt necessary and I, I trust.
They came in and met with Jack several times.
Yeah.
I don't think he would have missed it.
And it's in line with the house too. It's not going.
Right. It's to me, it seems very simple and very easy.
All right, I would agree. And again, for the record, what the reason that this finding is needed is because those pre-existing nonconformities are on the frontage and obviously the setback. The other setback, front, left and rear, obviously rear, there's a very deep lot, like you said, like yours, Joe. There's a few in the street in this area. Plenty of setbacks on all of that and the height of the house and, and so forth. So dimensionally, it's, it's that right setback and the frontage that make it nonconforming, pre-existing nonconforming. Hence the application for a finding and a determination and not a variance as, as again, we're, we're contemplating here. So, yeah, again, I'm okay with it as well. I don't see in the file any correspondence from other town boards. They don't get findings, right?
No, they don't.
Permits and variants, right? So there's no other correspondence from other town boards who would typically weigh in on certain applications that we get. But I do see, are there any other comments, questions, board members?
No.
Okay. I do see some other folks in the Zoom meeting. So if you are members of the public, I will open it up to public comment at this time. If you have a comment or a question, can unmute, raise your hands. We just asked, I don't see names. I see phone numbers. We would just ask you to identify yourself with a name and address for, for our record. Going once, going twice. Seeing no hands being raised. Last call. Okay, they're just interested. All right, we'll close it to public testimony then at this time. So back to the board.
Peter, can you raise it so I can just see if the dates on your plan? Yes, dates on Hayes's plan.
See what I can do for that. It's over here. Come on, his plan.
Well, that's the site plan and then it's his plan.
Yeah, this is dated January 17, 2020.
Yeah.
And the Phoenix plan, can't read it. Hold on.
It looks like 9/26/19.
It is. It's 9/26/19.
And we have a stamped site plan for the record.
Yes.
And you verify that, Peter, these are really your plans and really your signature?
I do.
And the date that you took the document?
I do. Make sure we're on the record. All right, Mr. Chairman, I move that we find that request for continued nonconformity based upon the site plan by Haynes Engineering presented to us this evening dated January 2020. And the drawings that Mr. Sandor has presented to us dated 9/26/19 prove that it is just a continuation of the nonconformity and will not impact neighbors or the neighborhood in any way.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Under discussion, I wonder if we may clarify again for that paragraph 190-50. Typically, we, we make it two-pronged that they're not proposing to increase the nonconform, existing nonconformities in any way. And if one were to find such nonconformities, that we would also find that they're not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
I didn't add that in because there didn't seem to be any question about that, but I'm happy to add that if you would like to.
Yeah. So if you wouldn't mind amending your motion to that effect and.
We will amend it to that, so be it.
Amy, seconded.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any discussion on the amended motion? Okay. So we will use the regular voting members on this who are all present. I will do a roll call vote.
A point of order. Do you wanna, do you wanna take Joe out if he's?
He, he, he didn't choose to recuse himself again. He didn't know this person. He, he does live in the area, but he again, felt comfortable being objective about the project and did not feel it was appropriate to recuse himself. So he could do so, but he chose not to, so. Um, so with that, regular voting members, Chip.
Aye.
Amy. Jim.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So that is a five zero unanimous. So you have your finding, Mr. Crozier. So we will, we will draft a decision on this and send it to you for review. And then we'll get it filed and then there's an appeal period, as you may already be aware. And then once that is exhausted, the thing, decision gets filed with the registry and then you could get your permit and begin working. So.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome and good luck to you.
Good luck.
Thank you all. Good to see you.
All right, Peter, take care.
Thank you.
Good evening. Bye, guys. Yes.
Before you go away, Dave, can I ask Peter a question? On something else?
Else. Sure.
Okay, it would kind of be other matters, which I think we don't have any new hearings.
Uh, no, we do not. We do have a couple of other matters just
Yeah.
follows, but so this would be appropriate.
Sure. Peter, I'm struggling with my memory.
Yeah.
The projects at, on North Ave.
Yes.
And we had many, many conversations about all. Who, it is my recollection that we still have a street sidewalk to go in in front of 600 as well as the new one. Do you remember that to be the case as well?
I do, and I know they met with the new town engineer recently.
Okay.
There's been discussions.
Right?
No.
Okay. That's all I was, I was trying, we tried, Jim and I tried to go back and forth and we thought it was pretty much in, so.
Well, it came, it came up in conversation today with the owners about how the walkway proposed on the right side of 598 connects to that sidewalk. So that's how I know. And they told me they met with the engineer.
It's, it also includes curbing.
Yeah, that's right. Is it on, it's already on?
I, I, I've driven by a few times and I think the granite curbing is all there. It may need to be straightened or something, but.
Really? I didn't think so, but anyway, whatever.
Maybe I'm, maybe I'm mistaken. It would be the first time, but.
Did you have your glasses on?
No. All right. Thank you, Peter. That's.
All right, we'll talk soon. Thank you.
I thought we all remembered it, but I'm glad they're aware of it and it won't be an issue.
Yep.
When are they going to be looking for anything? Like sign offs, what's their schedule looking like?
So at the, right now kitchens are going in, finishes are going in, doors are being hung. So it's getting close. Elevator is almost in. So we're getting there.
Okay.
A couple of months probably.
Great.
Yeah.
Super.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Peter.
Thanks, Peter.
Have a good evening, everyone.
You too.
Yeah.
Okay, so clerk and board comments. I know there's been a few other updates going on with some of our projects that have been, already been approved. Amy or Jim, did you have any updates to report at this time?
Since Amy's clerk, I'll let her take first try. You got anything, Amy?
I was just wondering if there's been anything happening with the gas station, with the vacuums and stuff.
Yeah, so Gail, you can probably speak to it. I talked to Brian as well.
We're gonna have a call tomorrow at eight with the neighbor to fill her. Brian is, he was calling Abe, the owner, this afternoon. They did put the silencer on the bit. There were two issues where the noise was coming from. One was the, the dryer inside the car wash and they got a silencer for that. The other one is the vacuums. So that's the, what they're trying to work on now, how to make those, you know, quieter. So we do have a call eight o'clock tomorrow morning with the neighbor that's been complaining. And Brian is, you know, he wants feedback from that phone call from Jack and I. And then he's gonna talk to Abe and, you know, they're gonna, they're still working it out.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay.
Yeah, I talked to Brian too and and he, we talked about him coming for an update tonight, but they're still working on it. So perhaps when it's all done and, you know, hopefully the neighbors are satisfied with the mitigation, maybe we'll get some sort of summary of what they did or just, you know, that things are in a better place, you know? But they're still working on it. So he didn't, he didn't want to come tonight. Just wait till it's all done, you know?
If they put up a fence or do any site work, they have to come to us and ask for a minor modification. But once they know what they're gonna do, we'll probably hear about it very clearly.
Yeah, Brian wants to get, you know, since they did, they silenced the, the dryers. Now he wants to get feedback from her and exactly what is bothering her. You know, he wants to pinpoint what the problem is so they can, you know, narrow it down and zoom in on that and fix that problem. So we'll see.
Okay. Anything else, Amy? All right, Jim?
Yeah. Um, I got a. Yeah, I got a call Monday from Frank Bishudo on 2737. He's starting to kick into gear again. And he was, he said he had an issue with curbing at the rear island, basically, and the layout and the ability to do the curb and the like. And I thought, you know, it's, I discussed this with Chip a little bit, but I hadn't gone down there, hadn't gone back to look at the drawings. And I told him I'd be down there on Tuesday, which I did get down there on Tuesday. And lo and behold, he's cut the asphalt out for the island. But at the same time, he was forming up for cast-in-place concrete curbing, when in fact, clearly it notes granite. We got into a little bit of a heated conversation over this matter. And I didn't have all the documentation when they had to go back to my car and I went back to my car because I had the documentation in the decision for granite. And by the time I got back to him and pointed to the fact that the, that it points out granite, he had already cooled down and said, don't worry about it, we're ripping it up. We're ripping up the formwork, basically, we're gonna do granite. So as far as I know, that's taken care of or will be taken care of. He's putting the sprinkler system in. He's gonna do granite around the entry doorway in the parking lot, which he's supposed to. I think the only issue that may lie is what do we want or what we would allow related to the planter boxes out front? He says he doesn't have any water out there. Well, we originally had gardens out there, so there was supposed to be water and a, and at the same time, an irrigation system. So the question is, do we push him for a drip system? Or do we just let him go out there with a bucket once in a while and pour it on the plants? So, you know, and he hasn't asked for anything yet on this, but this was part of my conversation with him at the time. The other part was kind of strange, and I haven't dug into this. I don't know that we ever asked for them to be responsible for a sidewalk in front of Noto's place, basically there, and granite curbing. And I guess his, his, a butter basically says, you know, if you start putting granite curbing in, I'm gonna take it to court. Well, obviously, they grow, they drive right up with the sidewalk and park right in front of the business. So he doesn't want any curbing there. But I don't think we have the responsibility, nor is there anything in the documents, and I have to look, about curbing only and sidewalk only in front of Frank's property, basically, which would be 2737. I don't know how we could have gone beyond that.
There was a conversation about it. There was a conversation with Rick Stinson and the engineer.
Yeah.
And we did ask them to connect the sidewalk down to their exit, which does put it in front of Sunny Noto's. So that it would not be a pavement island. You know, so that it wouldn't be drive-in anywhere you want. Sunny Noto would actually have an entrance and an exit.
Like new curb cuts or something. I know we discussed it, as you said.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we discussed it and, and that was to tie the exit to there as they kind of surround that building. To tie it all together and clean it all up.
But is it, is, is that section in front of Sunny Noto work being done by this project or work that is being done by the DPW?
By this project as my, as my memory has it.
All right, I guess I have to do a little digging into history. Yeah, well.
I thought everybody was going the whole way down.
I don't know, I haven't, I'd have to, I'd have been concentrated elsewhere, but besides that one. So that's a new one on me as far as, as an issue. Because we know there's lots of issues that are coming up down there.
Yeah.
Because even, so Jim, even for that conversation to happen.
Yeah.
Frank thinks he has to do it.
I believe so.
Right, so the conversation is there. Frank thinks he has to do it. He's looking for relief from us not to do it. I wouldn't give any relief not to do it unless we heard from the town that they absolutely didn't want it. And I'd find a heart, that hard to believe. So I think Frank's right that he thinks he owes it and will owe it.
Yeah. Well, he doesn't want to owe, own some sort of legal process either.
Town property.
No.
It's not their property to fight about.
Right.
That's true.
The town can come and put in a sidewalk anytime they want.
Yeah. Well, let me dig around and probably I'll touch base with Frank and tell him he's gotta go and come back to us, I guess, and discuss it. But I think it's gonna involve the town eventually.
Yep. I, I quickly found that one of the plans and it does show curbs with curb cuts in front of Noto's, so. I don't, I don't know that it, I, I don't, you know, in time, we could pull up the decision and, but I think, yeah, it, they're gonna have to do what's in the plans and the decision.
I'm sorry, I don't think we conditioned it. It was on the site plan.
Right, I think it was there.
Yeah.
Or, or if it was work with the town to try to make this happen because we couldn't legislate it. But I just, again, I know we discussed it and I, maybe, maybe there was only so much we could do, but.
Well, there's probably meeting minutes on this conversation and maybe even a letter from DPW as well.
Yeah. Okay, well.
I have another question on that project too, though. The, the railway, the railings and stuff that are in the front of the building, for some reason, I recall that they were gonna be black or something a little nicer than what's there. Maybe I'm confused, but do you have, do you remember that, Jim? Or do you have it in front of you?
I'd have to do a little research. I'm, I'm not sure that I do, no.
I just don't remember how, I mean, when you go by the handrails, I, I don't think they look nice. I just, and I don't remember them looking like that. And maybe, again, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't remember it looking like that. That whole area, I don't, I think that was kind of screwed up.
Well, that area has been changed at least three times.
Right.
I just found the decision. There it is. So he knows, yeah, as you said, Jim, I think he knows he needs to do it. And they just need to get with the town because it involves the town and it obviously involves the front of Sunny Noto's. And they just need to get together and figure it out.
Yeah, yeah.
And if they can't and they come up with some other solution that they think varies from the plans we approved, then they'd have to come back.
Yeah.
Tell us what, what they've agreed to do with the town and the abutter.
Okay, well, thanks for this. Okay.
Sure.
All right. So the other one was I got late today was Eric from the Foundry Street project, who's the architect or project architect in charge, basically, sent me an email today, something about, and he, and I told him to get it to me early so I could discuss it tonight or he could come on Zoom, basically, and discuss it. But my later conversation with him, he said he wouldn't be able to get the material necessary tonight. So he's thinking of coming back at the next meeting, basically, on Foundry Street. But it's fairly simple, I guess, in that somewhere on there, it calls for a vinyl trim, basically, in the corners and to be painted. And I think Chip and I both know when you start painting vinyl, it doesn't stick too well over time. So there's a conversation to be had here. I don't remember, and I have to go back through my material that I have here as to what that color would be, but he said it's a dark color, which means it's gonna absorb heat and may expand and contract and peel, particularly on plastic. So I have to go back and look at, but I've asked him to provide us with renderings or any other sort of information that supports what they originally provided us with and what they wanted to do in this particular area. Now, this is inside the courtyard area, so it's not on the outside of the building, it's inside the courtyard area. So I'm not sure where this happens, how often it happens and the like. So until he gets me material, I, I can't even talk much about it, basically, at this point. So it will probably be a point of conversation at the next meeting, just to let you know.
And he's gonna request the changes, is what you're saying? Or are you just saying you just realized that this is what?
He, I, he's realizing that, that there may be, they may have created their own future maintenance problem, I think. All right, and so he's not coming to us with a solution yet. You know, does it mean changing, changing the vinyl color from a white to something else? I have no idea, all right? And, and does it make a whole hell of a lot of difference? Well, quite frankly, the last major change I was involved in when we changed the design because of structural issues, basically, the building came out better. So who the heck knows? Maybe this would be better. I don't know. We'll see.
Let's, let's let them come up with a solution and, and then see if they want to come before us for a minor modification. That's probably what it would entail.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Anything else? Okay, I did have one thing. And anyone else have anything? All right, I'm gonna engage Gail here too, because I, I drive by it a lot, some of you probably do too. And that is 404 Lowell Street. It continues to just be an empty site with a big backhoe on it. And I said, hey, Gail, anything going on that you know of? And Gail actually knows a little bit, so if you can just, just go FYI, they, yeah.
Yep, they were getting ready to come in for a foundation permit and they started to dig, because you don't need a permit to just dig. And they hit a lot of water, so they have to redesign the building, like they have to lift it up now. So they have to come back to the board. Yep.
I've already heard a couple revisions because the developer changed and they changed the design and so anyway, it just, and I know we did that and we approved the modifications and they went back. And again, it's just, I think I saw some dirt moved once.
Yeah.
It went.
And that's when they hit water.
I saw big piles and then it was flat.
Yeah.
So, so in most cases, when you build a building, you get a few borings and you find out how the stability of the soil is, basically, one, you find out where the water table is. And if you're running at a water table, they might get a very boggy place. And it, not just the water will be a problem, but the weight of the building and the thing will start settling to one side.
Yep.
I wonder what, you know, Mr. Caruso did across the street. I mean, literally across the street. I don't know how different the water table would be and all that. But anyway, just an FYI in case people are wondering what's going on that, that's like.
That's gonna be a total change then, right? Wasn't that like two levels of parking under? Didn't they go down?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Which was good. I think they reduced, they reduced units and increased parking and it was, I think, a better solution in the end, but yeah, they'll have.
They're gonna have to reduce more because they're not gonna have any parking.
But the building's going up in the air. Yeah. Okay, well, we'll see. We'll see what they come back with, but just an FYI, because if you're curious like I do, what's, what's going on with that project? Okay, any other topics? Next agenda item is approving minutes of.
And move that we approve the June 10th mittens as written.
Thank you. Any discussion?
No.
Everyone in favor? Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yep.
Greg?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you. That's unanimous. Before we adjourn, July 15th is our next scheduled hearing. But Gail, do we have anything on the agenda?
Nothing so far, no. And I alerted Brian of my vacation, so if he has anything, he needs to get it into me before like July 2nd, 1st or 2nd. And then I'm gone till the 11th or something, or 15th. So he hasn't given me anything.
Well, that would be just sort of other matters or pre-apps or anything. I mean, it's really too late for new applications, right?
Right, unless it's a finding.
Unless it's a, okay.
Yeah, that only needs 14 days.
Or a modification in the case of Foundry Street.
Yeah.
Right, they, yeah.
So stay tuned. There's no new hearings, but there could be some of these other sort of other matters or stuff. But as of right now, just stay tuned on July 15th. There may or may not be a hearing for that evening. Okay, anything else?
Move the.
Well then, well then.
Yeah, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Everyone in favor? Chip? Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Aye.
Joe?
Yep.
Greg?
Yes.
Yes, it is unanimous. We are in adjournment. Thank you, everyone, for your time this evening. Have a good night and we'll see you soon, perhaps.
Thank you.
See you, guys.